Good evening and welcome to the Thoughts of a School Board meeting for August 24, 2010, at the Eileen Foley Councilroom here at City Hall. And if we could have the superintendent call the roll?
Yes. Ann Mayer?
Here.
Carol Chelman?
Here.
Kent LaPage?
Here.
Dexter Legg?
Rebecca Emerson?
Here.
Ann Walker?
Here.
Mitch Shulman?
Tom Martin?
Here.
Leslie Stevens?
Here.
Linda Brulette?
Savannah Fedaro?
Here.
If we could have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would follow my lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Acceptance of the minutes. If I could have a motion for acceptance of the minutes for the July 13th?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. A motion for the July 27th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be placed on file. The full chamber indicates we have no public comment section. And let's move right on to the superintendent's report, please.
Thank you. At the end of the report, I'll ask Assistant Superintendent Zadrivik to really highlight the experience and qualifications of the five new candidates that we've hired over the summer. But I would call to your attention that in your packet, you've received the latest communication that I have sent to staff and will send out to families as well, which really foreshadows some of our opening of school day remarks as we welcome teachers next Monday and then the General Assembly of all teachers at the high school auditorium will happen at 8:30 on Tuesday morning, August 31st. And as you know, students in grades one through 12 will come back to school on September 1st. Some of the news that's highlighted in that little brochure is, you may remember, and you'll hear more of this in an update, a special presentation to the board in October, but we had set as an administrative council, a goal to get to scale with professional learning communities. And our hope was that 90% of staff would say that most, if not all, of the elements of a professional learning community were actually in practice. And when you look at the results of that in the brochure, you'll see that some 80% last spring thought that that was the case. And there's some good news in that because I think we fully recognize that not all elements are there and that we've got to go further. What's particularly even more pleasing is that when we asked students, to what extent were they invested in the work? And did they see this as the right direction for the school department to be going in? It's 94% of staff feel invested in the work and see it as the right strategic direction for us to pursue. So that's good news, and I'll be sharing a little bit of that with staff on next Tuesday. And then looking ahead, it talks a little bit about next steps, i.e. what the major goals are and are pushing the work forward with professional learning communities, which has to do with establishing a SMART goal at grade-level teams in both math and literacy, as well as developing a pyramid of interventions more fully and explicitly at the building level. So that brochure is in there. There's notification of a resignation. Susan McNichol had been a computer technology integrator at the high school, and as a result of the budget and the way the reduction in force list works, basically, she was assigned to be a grade-two teacher at Little Harbor School. She subsequently, over the summer, was able to secure a job elsewhere, and so she's moved on. And you'll see later on, we've hired somebody to take that place in grade-two at Little Harbor School. I've shared with you a draft of proposed school board goals. We'll talk about that later on in the agenda. You have basically a draft of an annual progress report. That's required under federal law, under the No Child Left Behind, where we're asked to publish annually our progress in meeting adequate yearly progress, how we're doing as a district and in our schools. So I've given you a draft copy. We're hopeful to publish that, put it online by September 1st. And more importantly, we've also developed an insert, which I will share with parents, that speaks to how we're addressing the data, kind of what steps the district is taking this year to kind of respond so that we get better and have more children achieving at higher levels, as well as some of the other initiatives district-wide beyond achievement. And then lastly, I've given you a draft of some comparative metrics. You might recall at the last meeting, I was asked to share what I had done to date in trying to establish a cohort group and trying to find a group of schools that are similar to Portsmouth that we can look at for a variety of reasons, not just academically, but budget, et cetera, staffing level, per pupil ratios. I talked with the chairman, who's not here this evening. He said that he would like you to have that and that he would be scheduling a workshop session later on so that you could kind of tackle this and have some conversation about it. So that's there. Also, you've received some correspondence, essentially a thank-you letter from Jill Lemay, who's very appreciative of the reception you had for retiring teachers, as well as her commemorative clock. A nice letter from the New Hampshire Department of Ed, which basically says, "The district has met all the federal requirements in special ed, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA." And then a letter from a community member who actually CC'd you and a letter to the JBC about parking at Portsmouth Middle School. So that's it. I'll turn it over to Mr. Zadrivik to share with you our new hires.
So we have five new hires over the summer to start the year with us. The first is Amanda Hodgson, who will be our new family and consumer science teacher at Portsmouth Middle School. Amanda has a bachelor's degree in family studies from the University of New Hampshire, and most recently was a paraprofessional co-Brown Northwood Academy. We also have Ann O'Connell as a new third-grade teacher at Don Darrow. Ann is working on a master's in reading from the University of New Hampshire and has a bachelor's in theater from the University of Colorado, most recently a first-grade teacher in Rochester, and also a Portsmouth resident. We have Lisa Sweet as a new sixth-grade teacher at Portsmouth Middle School in a one-year position. Lisa has a master's in teaching curriculum from Harvard University, a bachelor's in biomedical engineering from Duke University, and most recent teaching experience in eighth-grade algebra teacher at Longfellow School in Cambridge. Lisa is also a Portsmouth resident. We have also Rebecca Tuttle as the new kids program teacher at Portsmouth Middle School. Rebecca has a master's in counseling from the University of New Hampshire and a bachelor's in developmental psychology at Plymouth State University. Most recently, she has filled in for the program, kids program teacher, at Portsmouth Middle School. And we have Heidi White as a new second-grade teacher at Little Harbor School. Heidi has a master's degree in literacy from Leslie University, a bachelor's from Wheelock College in Boston, and most recently was a first-grade teacher at Little Harbor School back in 2003.
So are there any questions about the superintendent's report?
So I have a question, just to sort of clarify. With the new hires for like the second, third, and sixth grade and the kids and the family consumer, with, you know, bumping rights and teachers' union and everything, so was there nobody else available on the list? I know that we had the one resignation from Ms. McNichol. She was supposed to go into one of those positions.
That's correct.
And then she resigned, so there was nobody else, so we had to open it back up. Because I'm just concerned that people here, you know, we downsized teachers and now are having these new hires. And I know they're not new positions. We're filling existing positions, but if you could explain that a little bit?
Sure, I'll do my best, and then Steve, you can chime in where I might omit something. But basically, when we made reductions in force, teachers who are on the list, we call it the seniority list, the reduction in force list, if they have multiple certifications, then they can go elsewhere and essentially bump someone. So at the end of the day, even though we adjusted some six-point-something teaching positions, when we got to the final piece, there was only one full-time equivalent who really was out of a job because of, Sue McNichol's a classic example. She was able, her position was eliminated as a computer teacher at the high school. She had alternate certifications. She went to Little Harbor as a second-grade teacher. She elected for her own choices to go elsewhere and make a decision to be with computers at the secondary level. So that's kind of, when we got to June and the city council actually approved our budget and they made one more, you know, a little more adjustment to that, we were really only one person because of resignations, transfers, things that happened, one person who actually lost her position here in the district. So then we had openings, and we go through that process. And so in the case of family and consumer science, that was a subsequent summer resignation of Ann McCarren, which I shared with you in July, and we were lucky to go out and find somebody in family and consumer science. It's actually not a certification program the state offers any longer, yet it's programming you're required to have in the school district. Ann O'Connell's a grade-three teacher at Don Darrow. We knew we had that opening all along. That was a position we had. Lisa Sweet is a one-year-only position. What happened in that circumstance was Ann Ellis is out on leave for the entire year. You granted her leave in the spring. She's the assistant principal, in which case then Sherri Weston, who's been a longtime grade-six teacher, is stepping in and filling the AP's position, and she's done that one other year. And so it's a one-year-only position where we were looking for someone with K-8 certification and with a strength in math and science. And there was nobody, there were two other positions, and I should, I want to qualify this, and I might have left that out. There were two era positions, coaching math positions that were out there, and that could have been available, but they didn't have the requisite certification to come in and be called back. Then you had Rebecca Tuttle, which again is a specialized kids program at Portsmouth Middle School, and Heidi White, as you just heard, as a result of Sue McNichol. Again, that's a K-8 elementary certification. So we've got five new people over the summer that we've hired. Does that explain it?
It does, yeah. I just want to make sure, you know, that it doesn't seem like, well, where are these people coming? So there was no one else able to fill the third-grade position over at Don Darrow, so we had to open it up, and that's where this came from. There was nobody else that we had riffed who had the qualifications to fill that.
Right. And as I say, because of the interplay between certifications and going elsewhere, there was only one person, and that was a library media specialist who couldn't come back and fill any of those positions.
No, that's probably, thank you.
Sure. Ian?
Okay. That, yes.
I just wanted to say, I attended the 8:30 meeting that you're having next Tuesday with all the teachers, the sort of kickoff meeting last year. And for people who haven't attended or, you know, for new board members, that's a really nice meeting. I thought you did an awesome job last year, and I'm actually looking forward to going again. It's very exciting, it's very uplifting, and I think it's a really nice thing to attend. So just FYI, it's kind of exciting.
Yeah, I agree. I'm usually gone.
The pressure on.
Yeah, you gotta come up with something really good this year.
Last year, can you beat this?
Okay. And Steve didn't want to add anything more. It was all said. Financials, Steve.
Okay. Need a motion to accept the hires, no? I, I, Madam Chair, I mean, just out of, you know, clarity and transparency, because of the Lisa Sweet hiring, I want to make sure that even though the chair has already accepted it, that the board needs to recognize that we've accepted her resignation from the board. And again, I'll just put it out there that the board has been so notified tonight with the letter for the first time, of the letter that went to Mitch on August 6th.
Six, yes.
Of Lisa's resignation. And, you know, traditionally, and anytime this has happened in the past, the board has just taken a vote of courtesy to accept so that they may move on with their professional careers.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept Lisa Sweet's letter of resignation from the Portsmouth School Board with heartfelt gratitude of her work over the last three years.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Now financials.
Okay. In your packet, you should have received a further refinement of the preliminary month-end for June or essentially the year-end for 2010 report. I'm happy to report that we were able to manage the budget to the end and follow the instructions of the board administration, and I think at the end, we have a list of, that was requested, of the technology that we were able to purchase at the end of the year to try to keep our rotation going. I think that the most important thing to note on this report is actually the third page this time because we had some preliminary estimates of what we'd get for Medicaid reimbursement revenue, and we actually, it's a hard one to predict because the data that we turn into the state comes from so many different sources and on so many different cycles. And we were, I was happy to report that I had anticipated about $375,000 to $380,000, but we actually achieved over $440,000 in Medicaid reimbursements for the past year based on the efforts of all the staff members to get their coding done and reporting in. So as a result of that, cost center 207, with the additional tuition, actually had a $90,000 swing in revenue in the positive direction for us. So that's good for that program. So that helps because that's a separate fund, and that money will stay in that fund and take some of the pressure off the general fund transfers. So we'll still be able to have a full complement of services next year based on this. We had anticipated that we might have to do some trimming, but as a result, we're going to be able to meet the full service load with the full staff that we had projected.
Steve, so just to make sure I heard you correctly, that $90,000 is a carryover? So I mean, that stays in that fund? It doesn't get zeroed out? It then is a carryforward, and we start with a balance positive for the?
Correct. We have, once we've got that fund straightened out a couple of years ago, we have been able to carry a balance forward. It just doesn't show up in this because you'd have to see a balance sheet to see that.
Right, exactly.
And then just for clarification purposes, the $90,000 you see is higher, is excess revenue than I predicted, but we'd have to compare the total revenue figure of $1,358,662 to the total expense figure of $1,323,482, take the difference from that, and that is the 2010 contribution to fund balance.
Right, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Any other questions, Steve? I have one, then, if I could. I just wondered if the computer equipment that you mentioned, all of that was purchased with the excess?
Yes.
Do we have an amount of that ballpark?
Ballpark was about $183,000.
Wow, excellent. And question for you. I wondered how the permitting boards and the MACs, how they're going to be distributed.
Well, equitably, there are three per school. So three to New Franklin, Little Harbor, Don Darrow. Same with the MACs. Those are teacher replacements, three each. So everything's done evenly across all three schools.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Old business. Second reading for the policies.
Yeah, so in July, you looked at a first reading of the attendance policy. Again, that is triggered by a change in state law around truancy. We did go back and make one modest adjustment to that, which was to eliminate the high school's definition of what was late. I think some members of the board had raised that as a concern, with Jeff Collins, the principal, and so we struck it. It's really a good idea because it applies to all schools, a half-day absence. And we similarly made another small change to the drug and alcohol use by students policy, which was to involve the superintendent, as had been recommended by the board at the last meeting. So we put a clarification on the first defense line in a subsequent meeting, just to make that clear. But other than that, there's been no change since you saw it, you know, some 20-some-odd days ago.
Any questions on the policy changes? And a motion to accept? So moved. A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call.
Voting all three en masse here?
Yep. Unless anybody wishes to pull one out.
Carol Chelman?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Rebecca Emerson?
Yes.
Ann Walker?
Yes.
Tom Martin?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
To vote.
Okay. We have the update on technology purchases, which we have just discussed. Is anything further on that?
I'd just like to point out on that, that if you look at the bottom of the page, you'll see that we're replacing our exchange server, which is in dire need of replacement. Has anybody who's tried to get me emails lately? So that's a good thing. And as far as the other, the elementary school, we did divide those up equally. And we did sort of do the same thing with the middle school and based it on the teams, based on the recommendations from the principal. This was a, this was a real group effort from the administrators and technology people. We sat down and said, "Look, knowing that, you know, going ahead, the idea was to set up, you know, a fund so you could, you know, try to do things, and because it doesn't look like that would be a sustainable situation, we've got a one-shot deal. What makes the most sense in terms of our technology plan and the needs that everybody identified?" And this was a pretty reasonable consensus that came out of that group.
That's great.
Excellent. Wow, that's great. Thank you. Okay. Update on special education budget.
And again, that arises, I think there was a question at the board meeting last time in looking at the financial report as to why there was an overage in special education. And so Steve worked with Paula Wensley and Marge Achilles to kind of break that out and explain why there was a variance there. Suffice to say, we had a higher number of students out of district than originally expected. Is that fair to say, Mr.?
Yeah, that's correct. And if you look at the report, you'll see where it's, in terms of the students, I wanted to make sure that everybody realized that the asterisks mean that there are multiple placements sometimes per student. And sometimes that's concurrently, and sometimes that's because they go from one to another to get through the year.
Question?
So the number of students served, if I added this up, that wouldn't be the number of students?
Right. No, that's right. It would be misleading because there are a number of duplications on there. It's about, you wanted to know what the placements were, and so the placements, I mean, some people look at placements that they're gone, and that's one thing, but technically, that's not, that's not the way it happens. These placements are service-related placements, so therefore, they could have more than one service for a child that we have to pay outside because we don't have the expertise or the staffing within the district to do that.
And so then, these are all our students, Portsmouth, Ryan Newington, that we?
No, these are all Portsmouth.
These are all Portsmouth only, that we send out because they cannot, we cannot provide what they need?
Correct.
Any other questions? Ken?
Just several. Dealing with this so many times. At some point, I would like us to have a brief discussion with the appropriate parties that are in charge of these placements, including probably Kathleen Dwyer, because when they're court placements, I know at times, along with special ed director. It is the single highest cost per student that we have. When we talk about, you know, the average being $13,800, this rises it up at least $1,000 per student when you take it on out. So I'd like to have that discussion in the near future. The second part that I'll ask is, does transportation cost, is that in the total of the expenditures of this, or is that still?
That's in transportation.
So it's not just the $1,620,236, it's plus transportation?
We always ask for the tuition parts of it.
Yeah, so that does not, so there's an additional cost. Several of these would have transportation cost above that, which rises it even significantly higher. And again, there are circumstances that absolutely we don't ever need to know about the youth, the students themselves, we just need to know about the programming. Some of these programs are relatively new, such as Living Innovations. We now have four students within that. That's a newer program. It hasn't been around as long. I think we can look at Sea Coast Learning Collaborative has been around a lot, and that would be one that I would quite honestly question why we can't meet what Sea Coast Learning Collaborative would have. And again, I think that's the type of discussion we're going to need to have. There are definitely court placements that are done for students and youth's safety that we can't overrule or challenge. But again, when you look at it, and it's really the single highest cost on a per-student basis, it rises it on up, along with the transportation. Too often, I think, we don't look at what might be able to be there. And again, I'm not saying any one of these schools or services that we put the students in is not, is not the best placement for them. I think we just need to be updated and further educated on it.
Now the talk, Karen?
I just want to say, I concur with what was just said. I would like to have more information about these programs, what they are, and why we can't provide these services ourselves. I think it's something that we should consider further as we go down.
Sure, we could schedule a workshop. Absolutely.
Interesting to notice, too, how many, the large number, almost half of them court Any other questions? New business. Steve?
Well, I'll take, I'll go, sure, absolutely. Basically, item A is to consideration approval of a halftime reading specialist at the Little Harbor School. Basically, I provided the board a memo, which updates you on the school choice option. There were seven children who basically exercised under the, you know, the CINNE status and ability to come to the Little Harbor School. There were five that are exiting Don Darrow and two who are leaving New Franklin, and that's across a number of grades, so the impact is perhaps two at a grade level. But nonetheless, in looking at enrollments, I provided you an update of what enrollment looks like as of August 18th at each of the elementary schools. And as you will recall, a year ago in developing the budget, we were committed to keeping enrollments under 20 in grades K to three. And with one exception, it looks like we're going to achieve that. We even anticipated needing a halftime position at New Franklin that we, quite frankly, didn't go forward and fill because we thought enrollments would be higher and they didn't occur. But we're looking at the first grade at the Little Harbor School, and you'll see that there are 82 students and four teachers, which give us 21 to 1. And, you know, it goes without saying, first grade is the critical year for reading, and we want all children off to a good start. We're asking the board to consider approving a halftime reading specialist. We're not looking to create that halftime model of teaching core, but actually providing resources dedicated to those first-grade children in reading and small group instruction and pull-out. And I think we have the monies and funds by virtue of not filling that position at New Franklin, and we have some other savings in budget where we didn't fill. So we're very comfortable in our general fund budget going forward with that. I think it also helps us mitigate the loss of Title I that occurred as a result of the change in terms of, you know, the percentage of free and reduced and losing the Title I status at Little Harbor. So I would ask the board to, you know, support that recommendation.
Is that something we need to vote on?
I'd appreciate a vote from the board. I'd appreciate a vote from the board.
Yeah, no, I was gonna just comment that I, this is a, a great response to, you know, a hole that we kind of knew was there. So I, I would put forth a motion to approve the half-FTE reading specialist at Little Harbor.
And a second?
Second.
Now, any other discussion? Lisa?
Leslie.
Not just me.
That's okay. She's here in spirit.
Yes, she is. I, I just want to put out there again that I'm really concerned with the fact that our school, not our school, not my school anymore, because my son's moving on to sixth grade, but Little Harbor has four hundred and sixty kids in it. When my kids started there eleven years ago, there were three hundred and sixty kids in that school. So that school has grown one hundred kids in ten years. And we talked about it bursting at the seams last year. There are forty kids more starting in the fall than there were last year.
And I, we knew there would be a bubble there. And the good news in all of this is when we looked at enrollment projections for K, we thought seventy-one were at sixty-eight, I believe. So we're, we're kind of modeling what we thought. We know there's going to be this, this, this little, it's going to be that way for a couple more years. You've got those three grades of eighty-plus.
And I agree with Tom. I think that this is a good, you know, sort of stopgap. But beyond the having a halftime teacher for first grade, I don't know how many of you have tried to drive into Little Harbor at eight-thirty in the morning on a rainy day. It's twenty minutes from turning into that parking lot to getting out of that parking lot. It's twenty minutes. And that was last year when there were four hundred and twenty-five kids. Now there are four hundred and sixty kids. So I, I guess I have some concerns.
Are they bussers, any of them?
Well, there's a, there's a huge community of walkers, but-
Be welcome, bussers.
But when it's pouring rain, or it's snowing, or something like that, it's, I, I have concerns about just even the safety of getting in and out of that school in the parking. Kayla, you can speak to that as well. There are so many, I mean, parents, there's no room. Parents are dropping their kids off in the middle of the parking lot because you're literally stopped, and there's no room. And so I think we just need to keep an eye on that, and, and, you know, Charlie's doing his best there, but I think we also need to offer him support and be asking what we can do and how we can help, because it is really beyond bursting at this point.
I guess the good news is that the crossing cards-
Yes.
Well, so separating out two separate issues, well, I'll meet with Principal Grossman. We'll have a conversation about what we can do to make sure that drop-off and pickup is safe. I mean, I think that's fair. But, but it's not unexpected. This enrollment is exactly what we thought it was going to be.
Well.
And, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that we didn't get eighty Ks, you know?
Well, school hasn't started yet, though, too.
I know, well, this is true.
You know, and you have those last-minute first-grade kids coming from, you know, they had their, their kindergartners in, you know, someplace else, and they're waffling about whether to send them and stuff. So I think there's always, you know, the possibility that-
And just so, and there have been a couple of occasions in, over the course of the summer where folks have requested to stay where they are. And I've, I've granted permission because of that. I mean, I can't think off the top of my head why, you know, there are reasons why they'd like their child to finish out fifth grade at a particular school, and rather than get moved into, you know, the Little Harbor District, we've, we've permitted that, and they provide their transportation and things like that. So we manage that as best we can.
So if somebody wanted to change now to come from Don Darrow or New Franklin, are they, are they still able to do that?
The only way, now, the choice option is off the table because the deadline has passed, but for new people to the district enrolling.
Okay.
So.
Did Little Harbor parents have a choice of sending their kids to New Franklin and Don Darrow, or just only the other way around?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Was there a vote, was there a vote on that motion today?
We were just waiting for a final-
Oh, that was the discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
A lot of discussion. Opposed goals.
Yes, I don't know how the board wants to proceed on this, but we had a nice administrative team meeting this morning where we looked at the goals. I have shared this with you once in July in a different format, but I tried to recast them as they looked a year ago, when you looked at school community goals. I'm not looking for you to vote on this this evening, but kind of maybe give some feedback to them, maybe if there are goals that are missing, something that you want to see happen. You know, it's, you know, Kent talks about wanting to look at special ed and kind of the out-of-district placement. I've had others talk about maybe an audit and special ed of some interest there. That may be a goal the board has that I have not captured here. But clearly, I've outlined multiple times the, how we go about achieving the mission, which is to persist and persevere with our professional learning communities, work on the interventions, work on the multiple literacy and math goals. And then we've got one around technology, which is integrating that key model, K-5, looking at the middle school with its Twenty-First Century grant. And then we've heard loud and clear from the board the need to look at electives and online courses for students at the secondary level. And we're going to pursue that, and, and as we said this morning, maybe it's a year, a long-term goal to have every student, as a graduation requirement, take at least one online course. So we're, we're having conversations, and we're going to work towards that. The next one has to do typically with, you know, improving, you know, continuously improving the system and looking for efficiencies. Well, we've got the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Commission meeting. I know you wanted to see a, a supervision evaluation system in place, and so we're going to implement what we designed a year ago. We're going to do the three-minute walkthroughs. We're going to do the annual performance reviews, and we'll actually come back in April and report back that data in aggregate form to you in terms of how our teachers did across the schools, how they aligned on a four-point rubric. So that's in place. The K-5 facilities assessment is underway with support from the CIP Fund, and then, did I leave one out? I might have left another goal out there. Communication is always a key piece, and so we want to strengthen communication. And I know the board talked about perhaps even sharing what we currently produce out to a larger school community. So I'll talk with Pat Remick about maybe, I don't know if these superintendents' updates are appropriate for her, or, or what it is, but certainly the report card that we'll be publishing soon, or if we develop a comparative metrics. We want to get that out in the hands of the community so they know what's going on. I think the good work that the board is taking on, and want to more widely disseminate that information. I know it's in, interested in the board to develop a cohort group, and I know that's always difficult because nothing lines up like Portsmouth. It just doesn't. But, you know, when I, when I developed that booklet, and we'll talk about it later, it's one-way in. It's just, you know, to, to look at enrollments first, then look at socioeconomic indicators, then look at relative wealth, et cetera. It's just one-way in. You can get in, and you can, you can decide, hey, that doesn't work, and we'll go somewhere else. But I know that's what the board wishes to do. And then I think the big goals of the year are item four, and I know we're going to workshop this starting in September, but it's about, it's about being clear on our resource allocation. And, and the ultimate goal of the district is, how are we going to provide students who need more time with content to achieve the ambitious goals of the federal law time to do that? How are we going to provide teachers more time and do this in a efficient, ideally revenue-neutral way to be successful? So those are the kinds of conversations. I know I set up as goals, but I welcome the board to have a conversation about it.
Kent?
Kent?
We're missing a third of our board tonight.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I just, you know, if there's discussion about them, fine, but, you know, this is a full-board discussion-type thing. This is one that, you know, it's a hundred percent participation, including, you know, the absence of a vacancy even to a degree. You know, I don't want to put it off indefinitely, but there, there are something that I feel you need, when it comes down to full discussion, you need a hundred percent of the participation.
And that's, and that's fine. I, I, I certainly will defer to that. One of the goals I have is to then get this in a calendar format so that everybody knows when we'll do our major presentations to the board and lay this out. And, you know, that's kind of my interest in doing it. But I, I didn't expect you to do much of anything with it tonight, except, you know-
Good question. Leslie?
Any questions?
I thought this was really great, and, and I agree with Kent. I think we all want to have a conversation with everybody here. One thing that keeps coming up and that we sort of never address is the start, school start time. And I wondered if you had had any conversation with the administrators about that, or where that stands, or if we could even just add the conversation here somewhere.
No, I haven't, I haven't had that conversation with them, quite frankly. I'm looking to expand the day, you know, however, you know? But, but we haven't talked about, you know, the appropriateness of changing secondary school starts later. We haven't had that.
Ann and I had worked at length several years ago with Erin Bacham at the middle school, and we have lots of data and lots of information that we sort of never, you know, took anywhere because nobody took this on. But I feel like it's a conversation we just, we need to have. And, and as a parent of two high school children, at this point, it's really hard to get them out of bed.
Orange oldness in your office.
And I think it's, you know, I see, we all know this, but, and teachers say this all the time, but, I mean, I see the difference, you know, getting them up at six o'clock versus getting them up at seven o'clock or eight o'clock or whatever. And I, I do think it's a conversation we just need to keep talking about.
Okay.
Carol?
I think we, this did come up with the wellness, the district-wide wellness committee. We talked about what Leslie's talking about with regard to a later start date for certain kids, the start time for certain kids, and how good that is for children's overall well-being and health and growth. And, and so I don't know if through the wellness committee, we can maybe, it can go somewhere because I think, I think it's a really, really important component.
That's a good idea.
Tom?
Just back onto the goals. You know, this is exactly, you know, as Ed and I have talked, I, I like the format. Some of the things that you mentioned about just calendaring it, as well as, as some of these discussions start, you know, and the goals turn into action items on how we're going to achieve those goals, you know, I'd like to see that some of that stuff gets filled out because then, then the measurable component comes out to say, are we able to achieve this piece of it? And what are the components? So as a high level, I think this is great. And then, you know, as we fill it out, I'd like to see more of the other components, but I like it.
Carol?
With regard to communication, I wonder if you've ever thought, Ed, about maybe even having a column in the paper that's just dedicated to education, where you could, you know, you could be like a guest op-ed, and you could talk about certain topics.
Be dangerous.
So you could educate the public on issues that, you know, they may not be aware of that are really important and what, what we're doing, and you could talk about-
Right, yeah, it's, it's hard, it's hard to get the, the larger community engaged in what we're talking about already, you know? And, and, you know, the, the updates, I send to staff, and I've now shared them with parents, and it's really for, intended for staff, but it's, that, I think it's fine that people understand what we're doing. And then last year, I made a concerted effort to do four quarterly publications, one around the goals of the board, once it established its goals, to kind of lay that out and talk in broad terms. This report card we've just done, which also has an insert about where the district is focusing its efforts to respond to the data, I think that's a, I think that's a critical piece to get out to folks. And I don't know the best meth, you know, we put them online, we kind of send them home to families, but that doesn't seem to be enough. It's not enough.
I think people are inundated with information.
I know. It gets lost in translation.
And, and it's just another thing on your email. That's why I think if you did something in the paper and it was a special thing, where they were featuring you, and they might say something during the week about your upcoming, and I do think people in the general community would be interested, you know, if you're really telling them about what is it like in education today? How is it different when, than when you, when you were a kid? What's it really like in a modern classroom?
And actually, once this calendar is put together and we know when each of these will be discussed, you know, that, that could be something, say-
I'm not adverse to it at all. I mean, that's fine.
I think, I think you're a very good communicator, Ed, and I think you put a very good face on public education. And so I think the more we can get you out there communicating to the public, the better.
Okay, great.
I also just think there's a, there's a, an opportunity for a broader discussion because part of what I hear you saying is that there's a public relations component that can be thought through a little bit more. So, you know, the information is there, now it's just a matter of taking a look at how it gets conveyed. So, you know, we have the material, we're trying a, a number of different ways to do it, but public relations on information that is key, as well as the dynamic component of public relations when things happen, and we have other departments, whether it's the police that happen to respond to school activities, where I think there could be a closer, you know, broader discussion about how we coordinate public relations with other city departments, as well as, you know, the proactivity of things like, you know, this technology component that, you know, we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we are investing into technology that is going to benefit our kids, you know, this year. So I would, I would like to suggest that we have a discussion, you know, whether it's with one of the committees, or just, you know, maybe all of us have some suggestions, but, you know, maybe that's something we could also bring up with the city council or not.
Anyone else? Okay. I, I would like to just comment that I like the way our goals were given a little sum and substance from your point of view, what, what you are doing to help us to achieve the goals together.
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly. And, you know, it's funny, there was an article in the LA Times today, I don't know if you saw it, but there was five, five elements that, you know, hype, the districts, five simple ways districts improve. And one was, goals don't change over time. I mean, the mission is clear of what the mission of the district is, right? It's approving the, you know, getting all children to a certain threshold in terms of proficiency. That doesn't change. And so it's really, the, the goal number one, I don't suspect it should change much, which is to realize the district's mission. And now, what are the strategies and tactics we're putting in place to achieve it? I mean, I am hot, I, I give Mr. Zadovik a lot of credit. I think that the PLC movement is the right approach, and I think the staff is responding to that. And, you know, so it's how do you, how do you just keep the pressure on? How do you just keep moving forward and advancing, you know? And I think, I think the district's in a great place that way. The larger, the other issues are more thorny, shall we say, you know? But, but, no, it's going to be a good year. It's going to be a great year, I think.
Yes, it is.
You can afford to do it.
Okay. Community updates. JBC, I understand you are elected to fill in for Dexter.
Yes. Dexter Legg was unable to be here this evening and asked that I give a brief report based on some notes that he provided me in an email. But I was at the same meeting anyway, so. Number, number one is that the city council did vote at their most recent meeting to include forty-five permitted parking spots for the teaching staff at the middle school in the lot on the corner. That was a change from the original plan where it was going to be permitted on Paradise Avenue itself. So they rethought that plan. We're continuing to refine the choices that were presented to us in a design charrette by the, by the architects for the interior materials and the exterior materials for the building. So there were a number of color schemes we started off with, and it's been refined, and now they have it down to two that they're working on, and we'll, we'll build mock-ups for that for everybody to look at. We're pleased that we've had favorable responses from the technical advisory committee and the pre-tac meetings, and in general, you know, support from the city departments in terms of, of the way we're proceeding. I'm happy to report that we're on, we still have an on-time status report for the resurfacing of the high school football field to be ready for the first game, I believe, which is September tenth, I think it is.
Yes.
And hopefully, we are, well, I guess hours now, I was, you know, hopefully, we're, we're about hours away from getting our approval from the EPA to go forward with the work on the Granite Street project, which is a replacement for alumni field. That sort of, we've sort of been on pins and needles waiting, so we're still, still working and trying to formulate contingency plans in case that approval is any further I think that was pretty, pretty much it for the points he wanted me to, to bring up. And then I was asked in Chairman Shulman's absence to read a letter to the school board members. "August twentieth, dear school board members, after careful consideration, I have decided to appoint Ann Walker to fill a seat on the joint building committee vacated by the resignation of school board member Lisa Sweet. Ann brings prior JBC experience, having been involved with the building of the high school. She brings a long history of involvement with the middle school project, and most importantly, in my view, she brings the perspective of many years of classroom experience and insight into the JBC conversation. Sincerely, Mitchell Shulman, Chair of the School Board." in my view, she brings the perspective of many years of classroom experience and insight into the JBC conversation. Sincerely, Mitchell Schulman, Chair of the School Board."
Congratulations, Anne.
That's the end of my portion.
Questions regarding both the parking and the Wentworth School. You know, in reading and trying to digest, I'm taken back in regards to parking. You know, I totally have conceded this is where the middle school is going to go. I don't believe we were true and honest, though, in the beginning plan of parking. We've done a total change of what the original parking was. The discussion all the way from city manager's office to here was that, you know, there was consideration of even putting a parking deck in. You know, parking is an issue, whether, you know, we get letters from individuals and so forth about paving and so forth. This is a criteria, I understand, I think, I guess we meet it by the state. I don't know why we've changed totally for that onsite on road parking on Parrot Ave. I don't think, matter of fact, I'll be quite honest, I don't think, I do not agree with that. I think we had a plan. There was even discussion about behind Larry Fielder's such a parking lot that held a few places and so forth. The Masonic Temple parking lot has come on up. I know that there's an undercurrent right now of residents out there, I've not talked to any, but that have a concern because 45 spots out of that lot displaces individuals that work within the city. And it really is a domino effect. And I think it's a very short-sighted decision to use those 45 spots at the expense of those that work within the city. And again, it's not to find fault, it's to say that I was assured as the JBC, I'm sorry, as the plan prior to the JBC was formed, when the parking issue had been resolved. And I find that that is not what happened. You know, all evidence at this point shows that parking prior to the approval of the middle school project was not appropriately looked at. Second, in regards to the Wentworth School, I feel that this board was never notified in full about the historic, the historic committee out of Concord, basically, notifying about its need to have, whether it be curriculum, whether it be recognized, however it would be. And again, I'll stand here that the first I heard of it was through the newspaper, and I find that wrong. This is a major impact because according to the process, that prior to the building on the Parrot Ave, Pierce Island property, we would have to mitigate property elsewhere for that recreational type of activity. That was so set forth in the process. If Concord and the historic commission so desires not to have that building touched for a time period, this drastically delays process. And I'm surprised that I, as an individual, as this board, was never notified of that issue until reading it in the paper. Thank you.
Let's through one question, make one clarification. The, um, the New Hampshire DHR.
DHR, I'm sorry, yeah.
Just last week said that the EPA is the lead facility on this now, is the lead agency on this determination, just, I believe it was just a week ago, isn't it?
Right, absolutely.
And so we've been working very diligently, as have the consultants, with DHR for a long time. And then this was presented to us just about a week or 10 days ago. And so we've since been working very hard trying to get an answer from the EPA. And it was just yesterday that we got an indication from the woman at the EPA that they did agree with New Hampshire DHR that we could take the building down, but that we needed to wait for the letter. So we are waiting for the letter.
But I, as a member of this board, DHR had never come up prior to, I mean, you're saying, if I hear you right, Steve, that you knew from the DHR a good time period ago that this was something of discussion. I know as a board member, I was never so notified, and I don't know if other boards were, other members that are not on the JBC had any indication that this was an issue because, you know, it is one of those strange buildings in regards to its historic nature of having been built with that of pre and post-World War II funding and so forth for housing that happened. So again, I'm just disappointed that, you know, I, I was not notified other than what I read in the paper and that this was, and again, you're waiting for a letter. If the letter doesn't come, it does have consequences of delays which seem to be continuously fed out through the press.
So my understanding is we, it's a day-to-day waiting to get the word.
It's, I mean, the word yesterday from the woman was, we agree with the DHR, you can take it down. And so now she said, but, you know, we have an official letter that's coming your way, and we've been calling to say, can we start in anticipation of letter, and we get no return phone calls, so. Dan Hardtree calls there every day. So hopefully by tomorrow, we'll know, day by day.
Okay. Technology Committee.
We've not met since the last update that I've provided, but I will tell you that we are meeting a week from today, 5:00 on the 31st. Some of the things that I will bring up that are, or are being added, you know, one of the components that Mitch Schulman is working on with Susan Burrell is to understand the usage and how things are being used from a technology standpoint. There's been a survey that has been done, and we are going to augment that survey with a supplemental survey that is really going to focus in on, you know, what teachers are doing today with technology, what they would like to do, what coursework is currently being done, so that one of the thoughts is to actually bring in, you know, in the next couple of weeks, when school gets back in session, a couple of roundtables with a number of teachers to really go through and complete that survey so that we can augment and have a complete view, so that, you know, part of the survey will be very rudimentary, all the way down to, you know, are you comfortable using a computer, to all the different types of software, to really down to the integration level of, you know, what type of, as I mentioned before, just, you know, what type of applications are you using? How do you want to integrate it into the classroom, et cetera? So that we really have a complete vision of, you know, where we are today, but also where the teaching staff would like to take and use technology in the classroom. So that as we formulate this plan and can move towards having that survey done, we'll have a very complete view of, an assessment of our teaching staff. So we'll have, and I would ask that we would have another technology update for the next meeting because we'll have a lot to report out on.
Thank you, Tom. Well, that takes up to our, to our, the end of our agenda. I would like to suggest, if you have not, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Sorry about that. I just want to go back to Kent's point for a minute about the JBC. I remember we talked about everybody on the board getting JBC notes. So is everybody getting the notes from the JBC meetings? Are you getting those, Kent?
Yeah, but the historic, or THR, THR is not mentioned in any one of the.
Well, it was, we talked about it at our last meeting, so I would think it was in.
Last meeting, but from my understanding tonight is that that was an issue that is many weeks old.
Well, I, I would think that, I thought you were saying that you knew nothing about it, and I thought it would have been in the notes because we did talk about it.
Just this last one, meeting.
No, we've talked about it before, it's been the minutes before.
We talked about it the night we did this.
There's an update, there's an update provided at each, usually at each meeting by, you know, staff and JCJ staff and design team and stuff, and so I'd put it, I'd put them in the minutes and you get the minutes. The issue is that the minutes aren't distributed, like your minutes aren't distributed till they're approved, so you go two weeks.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
You got a two-week gap.
Okay, that's, that's, it was the approval.
Right, yeah. It's the approval of the minutes. I mean, as soon as the agenda goes out, you get the agenda. As soon as the minutes are approved, that very next morning, you get the minutes.
Okay.
And that's what I was instructed to do, so that's what we've, that's what we've been doing.
Well, that makes sense. But so board members are getting the minutes once they're approved?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes, we just got the ones for the previous one.
So I guess my other question is then, Kent, what would, what process would you have liked to have seen so that you were informed about that?
Well, one in regards to the, I mean, I brought up the parking, and I don't, we don't need to dwell too much on it, is that parking took, from what this board approved to send to Concord, wiped out. It does not exist.
Well.
When it comes to the DHR, I feel that there has been much discussion, whether it's through the JBC or through that of, you know, the city and administration, that this could become an issue. It has, it shed a light out there that this board should have been at least notified immediately that this is, these are hurdles or whatever, and we're working on them.
So it sounds like then you would like information before you get the notes.
When it's relevant.
When we have these things.
These two, these two are pretty major ones.
To go back to the parking for a minute, and Steve and Ed, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of the parking is that the plan was, you know, our original plan was sort of based on approval by the city, by the city council. So we had to take it before the traffic and safety or the parking committee, or I'm not sure which, but, and it was up to them and then city council to say yea or nay to our plan. They said nay to it, so then we had to come up with a second plan. So we went in with the plan that you're aware of, but it was not approved, so we had to come up with something else.
Back, Leslie, this board took a vote on the parking plan that excluded using the Parrot Ave parking almost a year ago. We said that we, when we looked at parking alternatives as a board that, when we sent it along, we actually, as a board, said, no, we like the onsite street one because it didn't disperse.
Yes, that may be.
But Attorney Sullivan had ruled that you could not permit on-street parking, so you were.
That's not news.
Yeah.
Should have been given to us back a year ago.
Oh.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not news, don't, don't tell me about it. We should have known at that point. It's a year later.
You mean from Attorney Sullivan?
Whatever, you know, whatever department's relevant.
So I think, in other words, I hear what you're saying, but I think the process was that we presented it, it was not approved, and then we had to go back and rethink that.
Yeah, because this board approximately a year ago decided it did not want to displace the workforce. And now this board is displacing the workforce, parking.
Rebecca.
I just want to make a comment. I understand where you're coming from, but we're not adding new cars. There are cars down there already. The teachers are already parking somewhere.
Those cars that are on the road are now in the parking lot.
So there are X number of cars there already. We're not adding more. I don't know if that makes you feel better or not, but I think that's something to be aware of because I too, when I read the letter, I was like, oh, right, we're adding all these spots, but they're already there, it's just a matter of where they go.
Switching one from another. Other comments, questions? Any other business to come before the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And I'm going to ask the superintendent, recently, and again, I applaud the efforts of the high school and how beautiful it looks in the front, but I do have a question. There is an ordinance and city guidance in regards to that of private business signage, and we now have two rather attractive plaques that are promoting business, and I believe that may not fall into compliance and/or has to be prior approved to the board.
Let me, let me do some homework.
Yeah, I just need, I would like clarification on that.
Yeah, but you have the classic 2010. For those of you who may or may not have plowed all through this incredible resource, I'm going to do it a few more times. Wonderful information, and if I could have it all in my head, it would be wonderful. But a really great resource. We will have many good discussions over this once we've digested it. Our next board meeting is September 14th here in this room. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
De moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.